Okay, we're gonna call, go ahead and call the meeting in order. The scheduled meeting is Barstown City Council. I need to make an announcement. Start the meeting that we will be going into executive session pursuant to KRS 61-810, Paragraph 1B deliberations on the future acquisition or sale of real property by a public agency with publicity would be likely to affect the value of the property. So we'll be doing that last item on our agenda when we go into executive session. And I know Kim is here for the executive session, city other groups. So go on into the regular part of the meeting. Eric and Jeff with us for our electric distribution services bid tab if you'd like to cover that with us.
Sure. So, you know, as we were planning, you know, we had those two unit-based bids and we rejected those, so this was our hourly bid. We advertised it in the standard, sent out emails to a couple of the bidders who had been on the unit-based work. They apparently weren't interested in the hourly work even though one of them told me on the phone they would be. So we only got the one bid from Hamilton Power Lines for an hourly crew rate of $471 per crew. That was kind of our base bid, you know, what they charge per hour will be based on number of personnel, based on their, their bidded hourly rates for different alignment and trucks. So this will be, you know, not just focused on, we'll be focused on the south end, but we can use them kind of anywhere, but the goal will be, you know, as soon as this, if it gets authorized, will be to assign them to do the south end work on an hourly rate where we will heavily monitor them, you know, keep track of, you know, the one thing is with hourly rates, you know, they can kind of say, you know, how we monitor them. We're gonna do, you know, daily log sheet and, you know, me and Jeff and our lead lineman will be kind of monitoring them routinely to be sure that they're not taking advantage of us on an hourly rate.
Have you had a second to just kind of do some calculations on yours? I know the goal of this was to try to get this within a more budgeted amount, you know, the previous bids exceeded our budget by quite a large amount. Is there any way for you to tell if this looks like, I mean, what's phrase, what's the size of a crew?
The typically, the, we based the bid on a five-man crew with three trucks, a digger truck, a bucket truck, and a crew cab for the foreman. You know, that may vary depending if there's one foreman and two crews of four, you know, operating on in different parts of the same area, you know, so it'll, it could vary typically they're on, you know, four, four to five guys, you know, two trucks per crew. So we try to do like, you know, come up with how many total hours would it take for the whole job? Now, it's a little hard to estimate, so we're gonna kind of keep track of it early on. You know, I think the, the minimum is 90 days that we have to keep, you know, honor the contract, you know, so 90 days from now, if it looks like, you know, we're gonna over on the budget, you know, we can call them off. But we're going to start with keeping track of their crew hours and comparing it with, you know, those unit rates and do that for a month or two and make sure that we're staying within budget with the hourly crew rate.
It's gonna be near $500,000.
So you all are comfortable with this rate for a five-man crew with three trucks?
Yes. I was just gonna ask, based on your experience, and it's more or less what the mayor just had asked, but just comparatively speaking to, you know, but based on your experience using contractors in the past, are you comfortable with that price? And that's something that's comparable to, even though we didn't obtain another bid, is that comparable to?
Yes, so we've used different stuff on hourly basis, storms and such, and they haven't raised it any for that, this particular work, but it's basically what it is.
And that being a 90-day minimum, how much of this work, as far as, I'm assuming that a lot of this is gonna be on the 12KD conversion project?
Yes.
So how much of that work are we anticipating this 90-day trial period to cover?
As much as the water will.
Okay.
So we're gonna keep track of it, you know, I've already told, you know, with, the good news is, you know, by utilizing them on hourly rate, you know, we can also deploy our crew. So we're gonna kind of keep track of both crews as it's job-specific, you know, and see that, you know, what's our total cost attributing to this conversion and make sure that it's under budget. But, and, you know, back when we were looking at going hourly, I, you know, took as close as I could tell some, you know, some of Hamilton's previous work, that's, you know, based on their description of, you know, an A5 with five services and transformer was X amount of dollars and compare that to a unit-based and it was like a third of the cost. And these hourly rates are a little inflated, but, you know, about the same as the past couple of years.
Well, that's another good thing to point out is the fact that, you know, we've used Hamilton quite a bit in the past, and we know them, and we know, know their workmanship and so forth, so I think we're comfortable in that respect, I would say.
Yes.
Anyone else have any other questions? Eric, the recommendation to me and for me all is to accept the hourly rate of the bid from Hamilton PLC of $471 per hour?
Yes.
If there's no other questions, I would ask for a motion to approve the recommendation from the Electric Department for Hamilton PLC for this electric distribution services.
I'll make that motion, Mayor, to approve electric distribution services bid tab for Hamilton PLC at the $471 per crew hour bid rate.
I'll second it, Mayor.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, six to five, say an aye. All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, Eric. Thank you, Jeff.
I can't blame you, Jeff.
Oh, well, you're not finished, I see. So, next item is our 300 KW diesel generator bid from January 30th, so Eric, you wanna address that as well?
Sure. So as we discussed at both the committee level and the last time I was here for the council meeting, we've advertised for bids. We received two competing bids for what our spec was of the 300 KW. Wayne Walker Cat was around $64,000 for 300 KW. Eva Park, which they were about generator, generators, was at sixty, a little over $60,000. But then there was the exception from Wayne Walker Cat for their $40,700 used 400 KW diesel generator. So with that exception being a little bit larger, it is slightly used, but they said it was a backup generator that was rarely used. They'll give us a two-year warranty on it as if it was new. So because of the lower price for larger, even though it is slightly used, we think it's the, the best option to go, so that was what I recommended is for the accepted to the bid of the 400 KW Wayne Walker Cat generator.
What's the life expectancy on that particular type of diesel generator?
The one we have currently is 30-plus years, has a lower RPM, this one being higher RPM, but, you know, I'd say at least 15, 20 years, you know. The depreciation schedule probably will be quicker than that, but at least the useful life being that, you know, it's, it won't be heavily running, you know, except in outage mode, you know, so we won't put a whole lot of hours on it, you know, except for emergencies, so it should last us.
Water plant generator is approaching 20 years, and it's bigger.
What's the warranty on the new one? How many years do you usually get on that?
Two years.
Two years?
So that they match their, what their new one would have been.
I think this is basically one that someone didn't take, right? It's not so much that it's a used one, it's, isn't it one that someone ordered and didn't take? Is that correct?
I believe they, they ordered it and had it for just a short amount of time and then bought a bigger one or something, and it was, it was, has less than 100 hours on it, and that's what I was talking about, salesmen.
Are you familiar with Brian and comfortable with all that?
Yes, yeah, it's a, it's a Caterpillar.
Okay. Who do we have now, Cat?
Yes.
I believe so, yeah, Larry Hamilton was, you know, talking to me this morning, how their, that's all he ever bought was Caterpillar, so I know he favors them, comfortable with it.
Any other questions for Eric or Jeff on the generator?
I guess that'll still include commissioning by the plane, so just as if it was a new one, right?
Yes.
Yes, we will, we have to upload it, install it, and then they will come and commission.
Excellent.
Does that mean they hit a bottle load or something?
What's that commissioning, is that?
Probably take it to full load, make sure, now put 400 KW, so we will not, you know, operate it at full load for any time soon, that's why we're even, even inspecting the 300, so it'll, you know, take, I know the one we run now, you know, when it's tested, they put it up to its full load just to make sure that it'll run, so.
And they come in and do all the pre-checks and run it at load for a certain amount of time?
That's what commissioning is?
That's the commissioning, yes. It's not a bottle shank.
Someone is late, we're not quite up on the electric side. Any other questions? Based on the recommendation of our city electrical engineer, I ask for a motion to approve the alternate bid.
If I may be in order, I'd like to approve the alternate bid of 300 kilowatt diesel backup generator, I'm sorry, kilowatt diesel generator for a $48,700 for Wayne Walker Caterpillar.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Hibs. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, six to five, say an aye. All opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you, Eric. Okay, next item is our bulk chemical bid tab, I guess Jessica, is that you?
Yes, Mayor. Every year we do a advertisement for bids for all of the chemicals that we use in our water and wastewater treatment facility and request pricing from all of the vendors. And this is basically the recommended, everything you see highlighted is our recommended award for those chemicals that we utilize. If there's anything that you see that is, there's, I think, two chemicals I will bring your attention to, that the lowest bidder was not recommended to be awarded. One item is because the chemical or the polymer, I think it's a carbon, I'm sorry, it was not an equivalent product. So once we look at their specification sheet, it was not the appropriate carbon that we utilize at the plant, so we are going with the next bidder. And something similar with the sodium bisulfite, we are recommending Brantag in lieu of chemical resources due to a quality issue we had had with a chemical resources. We had an issue that became a safety concern where the chemical provided was not the chemical in the container. So we are requesting, and Brantag is our current vendor for that chemical, we've had for the last year, and we're satisfied with their service and their product at this point. So at this point, I just need the council to recommend authorization for us to award the bids to those recommended in the bid tab.
What about, I know there's got to be some of the audience here, but Micro's saying we got Owen Berg, he's done $6.95, and then S4 Water's .14.
Sometimes they provide, again, it's a different product, or they're providing it in a unit that is not what's specified on the bid tab, so trying to convert it backward, but that clearly is not the, probably the right unit, you know, per pound. They might have given a price for some kind of major bulk that we can't obtain it in.
Are you comfortable that's in line with what we've done?
Yes, that's similar to what we used in the past and the price that we're paying.
Okay, we have any other questions, just on various chemicals and quantities? It's not unusual to have multiple vendors supply all these different products, but that just seems like this is sort of a normal type of bid tab for this annual.
For this type of annual bid, it is, 'cause not every vendor has the ability to supply every chemical. So it's used to having a lot of different folks and awarding to multiple different vendors.
This is, this is a typical bid, everywhere we have this, this bulk chemical bid and looking through these, these companies, either basically what we pay every month or every quarter, however, however we pay them, so I'm pretty familiar with that. It's okay with you, Mayor, I'd like to approve this bulk chemical bid tab that Jessica's presented, which is for the chemicals for the water plant and pool and everywhere else we use them for.
Do we have a motion? We have a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Doze. Any other discussion? All in favor, six to five, say an aye. All opposed? Motion's carried, thank you. The next item is the mowing bid tab for the cemetery.
Let me speak to it. Okay, so we opened up the bids on, last Friday, we only had one bid submitted, which is King's Mowing Service, Michael Kings, the owner, he's the one who was awarded the contract for the last contract range, which is for a two-year stretch, so two spring and summer seasons. We did try to get some additional bids by sending them to the companies, you'll see at the bottom of the bid tab, but King's Mowing was the only one that submitted a bid and his, his prices are exactly what they were last year, so there's zero increase. And compare his service and his level of accountability, when damages occur and they're bound to, or issues come up, we were pleased that he bid, we were glad that he was a bidder and feel very strongly recommending him for the next two-year contract to mow both the Maiden Cemetery, the Pioneer Cemetery, and Presbyterian. Do we have any questions?
Where's the Presbyterian Cemetery?
You pass it every day. At the corner of the temple. There's no, obviously, sign there.
Temple of history.
Yeah. Yep.
Okay. Could then, I'd ask for a motion to approve the bids for a two-year mowing for the cemeteries here in Barstown, from King's Mowing Service for $1,050 per mowing.
So, so, Mayor.
A motion by Councilman Buckland, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second, my Councilman Hart. Any discussion? All in favor, then, six to five, say an aye. All opposed? Motion's carried, thank you. Okay, Jessica, you wanna walk us through the work and relocation on the bridge of Potter Shop Loop?
Yes. Most of you may have heard about the bridge program in Kentucky right now, they're going through and trying to replace, fix, repair deficient bridges across the state. And Potter Shop Loop Bridge was identified as one with deficiencies, and they're needing to basically reconstruct that bridge. And in doing so, there's a water main that runs adjacent to that bridge abutment, and this, the water main will need to be relocated before they can move forward, like tearing the bridge out and building the new abutment. So this agreement that you have in front of you is just standard agreement with the transportation cabinet stating that they, we're entering into this agreement and they will be reimbursing and/or paying for that, that relocation for the water line. They've already been in communication with me in my office and met in the field with Super Pulpalbert Superintendent Ben Bird, and we've already looked at, you know, where that line needs to move. It doesn't need to move very far, we already have valves in place that will be able to keep disruption to a minimum. We're working with them to help get just additional easements from them, because right now I believe the water line is in the white of way itself, and it just needs to come back within 15 feet, you know, as we would have most days now on normal lots, a 20-foot utility aid easement. So that's essentially what this is, this is going through the process and so they can move forward and, and make those repairs to the Potter Shop Bridge, or Shop Loop Bridge, I should say.
It appears that all the costs that we would incur will be reimbursed.
Correct, yes. And the way I've been in communication with Mr. John Edwards with the, I think he's with the KYTC, I think he's with the Highway Department now, but he's working with the engineering firm who is in charge of coordinating this project. And we've been, we've submitted our specifications and our requests for, for the materials, and they're willing to make sure that the water company gets what we need and our specifications are met, and they'll have it in their bid package. So yes, no costs to the city.
So they're needing a motion to, I guess, allow me to execute this contract on behalf of the city with the Park of Transportation.
Yes, Mayor.
Ask for that motion?
Mayor, if I may, I'll make a motion to allow you to enter into the agreement, utility relocation cost agreement that's gonna be done by the cabinet's highway contractor. For the Potter Shop Loop Bridge.
Excuse me. Do we have a motion, then, do we have a second?
Second.
Second, my Councilman Hibs. Any other discussion? All in favor, six to five, say an aye. All opposed? Motion's carried. Jessica, I was kind of amazed, I know this is not a super big project, but I saw a 24-page document, I said, I hope that's some kind of standard language. I guess they keep the same language whether it's $3 million or $200,000.
They, they really do. If, if you, I don't know if anybody noticed, at one point in time, the first person that sent me this, it had Louisville Water Company written, you know, in the top, so.
Boulder Plate.
It was a Boulder Plate, like, you need to place the plate in the city of Barstown. They're like, oh, I'm so sorry, we'll get that right over to you.
Okay, thank you. We don't have any HRB this week, but the next council meeting, I know they've got a big meeting, and next Tuesday, so we'll have quite a few CLAs to consider the next meeting.
36.
36.
Yeah.
Well, under correspondence, Jessica, I think I'll let you go ahead and go now rather than under the staff reports, under correspondence, I think we've got a couple of things to talk about. Good news that we did get in correspondence this week.
Yes. Great news, in the last seven days, we were approved by the Kentucky Infrastructure Authority for $5.4 million to move forward with our improvements for the Rowan Creek sewer improvements, so the trunk line, the Potter Shop Pump Station improvements, and at the Town Creek Plant. We also got a press release today that came out that the Economic Development Administration Office has awarded the city of Barstown a $1.6 million grant. So we've been working on that, Kim Houston helped, we had a lot of folks working on that application and following that through these last six months or so, and we're really excited that we were awarded that money for our community, for our economic development. So, super excited about that.
And I was, I guess, it was such a great job by everybody who's involved and, and one thing I would say, when we did, when we went through the interview process to select a contract or excuse me, an engineering firm, HDR, and I think it was Mr. Hunter with them that day, I think, perhaps?
I think he did come along, Ross Stewart, that is, being in their funding.
They made a point of talking about these type of projects and how they have worked with a lot of communities to obtain these federal grants, and that they had this gentleman who's, who is a consultant for them, who had a lot of experience with submitting these kind of grants and the success they had obtaining these kind of grants, so that came into play, at least from my thinking, as when we selected the engineering firm, some of the others really didn't talk to that point. So, you know, we got $1.6 million, they backed up what they talked about, which is a great help of this, so $7 million towards the $9 million or so, we're sort of thinking this project's gonna cost, so, great job and great news for the city and good work. I think we just, they just gave HDR a contract last week for the Coles Crossing force main, so they've, they've earned their business with us, particularly after this letter we got today, so, thanks for that. Thank you, Jessica, thank you, Kim, for helping that. Okay, we have the Electric and Cable Committee meeting from January 15th, minutes, does anybody have any questions or corrections, have a chance to review it? I think we covered a lot of this at one of our other council meetings, Eric said, talking about this KU project, we're just, talk about some more tonight.
Well, Mayor, I was prepared to give a little summary.
Sure.
Are we talking about our minutes?
Yes.
Okay. As we'd skipped over our council minutes, I didn't know what we were talking about. Even a summary of that committee meeting is gonna be somewhat long, so, so bear with me, and if anybody has any questions, please stop me, if not, you know, we can, we can ask questions at the end, and then fortunately Eric and Jeff are still here, so if I stumble over anything, they can throw something at me. So, in summary, you know, we've pretty much covered the bullet points here and all those hit them, because we've already covered a couple of things tonight, a couple of these bullet points, with the 12KD conversion project, you know, that we spoke to that already about the bid rejections and redoing with the hourly rate, so that was done earlier, and that obviously is gonna proceed as the budget allows. The Barton Substation, you know, the KU's maintenance crew is gonna be on site the whole month of May, is that correct? And they're going to be taking that station offline, so that means that customers served by that station, you know, will be backfed from the, from the pool substation during that period until the work is complete. The Mutton Track Development, still underway, it's weather permitting, obviously, you know, all the contracts and contractors in town understand what they're running into as far as the weather currently. The Betel in sight, you know, is needing power, Morton, the streetlights, all that is, is underway, as weather permitting. The outage management system, you know, Nahom spoke a great deal about this, this plan to convert to this high-tech fully connected model, which, which, you know, looks really, really exciting as far, for our customers, you know, where each meter, you know, can report an outage to the system, which would greatly reduce, you know, any type of reaction time by the city to any type of problems that we may be having. And hopefully, we had talked about council getting a demo of this software, and I think that's still in works, that we can actually demo this and look at it, see, see what it's going to, going to involve. And that is to be purchased by June, correct? Do you have anything else to add to that, or is that, are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay. Cable TV and internet projects, construction projects ongoing, Wilson Creek Road is complete and up and running, the Solitude Road, which is 480, I think, and Plum Run Road are underway with fiber. And Nahom has driven that point home several times about fiber conversion and phasing out the COAC system as it is today, which will, you know, make us more competitive in the future with our internet and our cable alike. Our, you know, and the systems engineer still stated that, you know, that phasing out of that system is ongoing, and, and there's even a pilot program that's gonna take place in the Spring Hill subdivision that will be a fiber conversion project that's gonna act as kind of like the, and we'll be able to benchmark that and look towards the future and see what type of performance that we're gonna get from the Spring Hill subdivision conversion as we, as we move forward with it. Subdivision developments, Millwood, Oaktrace, those are fiber-only, which there may be some COAC extensions here and there, but pretty much those are fiber-only developments. We're gonna try to extend the life of the existing cable system by splitting nodes, which you'll add additional frequencies and things like that, which is going to extend the life by- the life by increasing speed, but as we convert over to fiber, you know, we'll be able to get more use and more life out of the coax system that exists. Commercial fiber locations, commercial fiber requests are growing with our growing industries, and one of the consultant Mills, Jeff Mills, has reiterated that most of our commercial sites have access to this fiber, so that's a great thing for incoming industry and a great option to have. Inside plant maintenance upgrades is basically a replacement of some of the billing software that's going on in-house. Internet speed upgrades, we spoke a little bit to that, planning out some, splitting of some nodes this summer, which is going to, again, add some frequencies and increase some speeds, and I think the department's going to be looking at analyzing some costs of some different tier levels of speeds that will be available, so that's, is coming. We'll be able to take a look at that, and preparing a type of a rate structure for that, for that, those different tiers. The advanced road network, or the advanced network roadmap study, it's a five-year plan that we have hired a TBC company that's going to, they do a study for the development of the fiber system, the coax to fiber conversion. So that's going to be a lot of good information, new technologies and information on those technologies that we'll be able to take advantage of in short order. The new website development, that is something else that's exciting for the city, they've brought in a new logo design and more or less going to replace the Barstown cable moniker with Barstown Connected, which is a more modern, you know, we're getting away from cable and going with fiber, so that's, that makes a lot more sense to go with the Connected and a new logo, which will upgrade and update our look as well as our capabilities. City Hall electric plans and upgrades, we dealt with that earlier this evening, as far as the diesel generator upgrade and the transformer upgrade, that's to increase the capability of backup for our head-in for all of our Internet cable and customer needs. Okay, and then we get to the time and location of our regular scheduled meetings, we discuss changing that to more, to make it more friendly for our members to have a little bit more time to discuss some things, you know, usually these meetings, as you can tell by the summaries, these meetings can get kind of long, so we're going to look at a municipal change, I guess, to do the second Tuesday of the quarter, which would be before our council meeting on the second Tuesday of the quarter in council chambers. And if that goes through, our next meeting will be April 9th, if it's amended by municipal order. So, if anyone has any questions, I'm sure Jeff and Eric don't mind answering any of them.
Well, I think you were saying you're used to having a four o'clock before work session.
Yes.
It's pretty tight to get all that stuff set up and on the air and then break it down before the council meeting, work session starts.
Right. So this gives more of an opportunity to do that, get time to get off work and maybe grab a sandwich before, before meetings.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
Unless these gentlemen want to add anything that I missed, anything?
I did a good job.
Then I guess, do we want to do this by unanimous consent to approve these minutes? Since you've had such a good summary, just in your pocket. Okay, we're by unanimous consent then. While we're on staff, I would like to ask Chief Cressid to speak to the incident we had, I guess, yesterday, and then Chief Manley, I would like you maybe to talk about the false alarm kind of issues going on and share with the council what we're doing right in the moment, so Chief Cressid?
I was actually started early Sunday morning, we've received information where there was a threat that was called in, it was on social media, and so we did some investigation on that and deemed that it was still safe for the kids to come to school, and, but you did see, the residents did see extra police at the school, and we did, if anybody follows our Facebook page, we did an update on the page to keep everybody in the community updated, and it was a juvenile, so there's not a lot of information that's going to be out there, but charges, we did work hand in hand with our Commonwealth attorney led by Terry Gohegan, and charges were filed, and the charges were terroristic threatening second, which is a class D felony, and the biggest thing is that we really wanted to put out on our Facebook and get out to the community is that any threat that comes out there, we take that very seriously, and we're going to investigate each and every one of those threats on any person or especially to our schools. And so, and if charges are possible, we're going to follow through on that, and so, charges were taken out on this incident, but the school was still safe for kids to come to school, but we did still have a present at the school on Monday, and we did, we were there again today also. So, you know, Councilman Chuckles and Councilman Williams saw that extra present on Monday and Tuesday, so if anybody, if you saw that on our social media page.
It was at the high school, correct?
It was at the high school, yes.
Anyone have any other questions, Chief, on that? Good work and good to be vigilant on that kind of stuff, stay in time.
Yeah, well, I'll just take any of that very seriously.
Okay, thank you. Chief Manley, you want to talk about some of the false alarm issues we've sort of been kind of tracking and?
Yes, sir. I keep it up to city ordinance on the false alarm fees and so forth, we track them yearly, we mailed out the bills yesterday, I don't have to figure it in front of me, I make places it was, not too many people had that great of amount, some places you're allowed two, then just $250 after that and so forth, most of them maybe had three or four. St. Joe's was kind of high. We do have two places that one mayor and I are working with, trying to do something about theirs, and I have a meeting with another place that, they had quite a few, and the issue is they have so many buildings on their campus that it all came in as one address, and it might not be the same building that has that alarm, so I don't really feel it's fair for them to rack up, say, a dozen calls to this one address, that it could have been one at this building, one at this building, and so forth, so we're going to sit down and talk with them and see if we can't come up with a compromise on that. But those haven't gone out this week, you might be getting some businesses calling you and say, hey, what's this all about and so forth, be happy to, just send them my way, I'll be glad to talk to them.
Yeah, we try not to be, you know, too hard on them, when you have the same address, he's got like, he or she may have six runs in a three-month period, all of them false alarms, you know, it's tying up a crew responding, you know, their time and our resources are consumed by that run, and they have, they just don't drive up and say, oh, nothing's going on, and head back to the firehouse, you know, they've got to make sure there's nothing going on, so there's, it's not just a 15-minute run to check these out, because even if you have a repeat offender, you can't just assume, you know, this particular one's not going to have something there, so you've got to respond to these, but, you know, after you rack up two, two within a year, you know, it is a cost of us to keep responding to those repeat offenders, so a lot of times it's, some of their equipment's bad, and other times they've got, you know, maybe a bird getting in constantly and setting it off or whatever, but they've got to take some measure to help fix it, and this is one way to get their attention, so, thank you.
Okay, back to the city council minutes, if there's, no additions are correct, so we can approve those by unanimous consent for the work session on February 5th. Just do that by unanimous consent. Let's see, we don't have any cemetery, or excuse me, any council comments? Anyone done the council, have any to bring before the council?
They have KOC day tomorrow, is that correct?
City Dean's meeting.
City night, excuse me.
Anything you need to talk to your state reps or state senators about, they'll be available from 12 to 2.
Where does that meet?
Kentucky State.
Kentucky Franklin? What location for the 12 to 2?
The city, Caplanix Building.
Caplanix, and then the evening event is?
It's going to be at Kentucky State University in there.
Excellent, so. All right, thank you. Any other comments or announcements from the council?
I have now. There's cemetery KV in the morning.
8:30?
Probably as interesting as the electric one, but it'll...
That position is not as wrong.
Is that 8:30?
8:30.
All right, thank you. All right, then, as we said, we had started the meeting, we asked if we'd go into executive session pursuant to 61.810, paragraph 1B, deliberations on future acquisition or sale of real property by a public agency with publicity would be likely to affect the value of the property, so need a motion to go into executive session?
So, Mayor?
Motion, a second?
A second.
A second, Councilman Park, any discussion? All in favor, so if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Or opposed? Motion carried, we need to go into executive session, and then we'll come out after we get finished. Regular session.
So moved.
Motion, the council, a second.
Second.
Second, Councilman Hibs. All in favor, so if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Or opposed? We go back in regular session. Kim Houston, who's president of Barstown Investor Development Corporation, and Sina's brought a recommendation from the BIDC, recommending the sale of Lot 1 in Wilson Industrial Park, it's 30.76 acres, to Barstown Warehousing for a total price of $499,850. There's contingency in the sale of this property that would allow the city of Barstown the option to obtain at no cost a 60-foot right-of-way through the property for a period of 15 years for the potential future connector road. The right-of-way would be through land that is, would not be developed, really doesn't have potential to develop. There is a buyback option on the sale at the same price to the BIDC should Barstown Warehousing not construct a building within two years. So those are the particulars. Just as an aside, the tract is 30.76 acres, but probably only about 20 acres of it, or 17 acres is really usable land, the rest of it is just literally...
Ponds off.
A lot of steep grades and not really developable land, but rather than chop it up and not get anything out of it, we decided to precedent where the developers would take the entire tract, so that, rather than leave an undevelopable tract just sitting there. So, that was kind of the discussion by the BIDC, so that's their recommendation to the council, requires a vote of the council to approve this sale as we've discussed.
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the sale of the land that you just described in that Wilson Industrial Park for 30.76 acres for $499,800.
Now, second the motion, Mayor.
Can we have a motion, a second, is there any other discussion?
Can I make one comment?
Sure.
Just for the record, during executive session, we made no decisions?
That's correct. And also, the one thing that Ms. Houston stated was that this warehousing is a very important ancillary use for our existing industrial base here in Barstown in Nelson County, there is a huge demand for warehousing. This company specializes in that kind of property and development, and the BIDC has had conversations with existing businesses in the community who will be in need of space and will be using this space, so it's sort of like one of those things, if you don't have some of this space available, there's a chance of some expansions that are currently in discussion that might not happen, but if this warehousing space does happen, it gives those companies a better chance to land up some of these expansions. You know, one thing we probably don't realize here, that when you have a manufacturing plant here, some of those same companies have manufacturing plants in other parts of Kentucky, and Indiana, and Michigan, and other places, and they compete among themselves for expansion projects. It's not just all about, some companies based out of Detroit, Michigan says, yeah, we're just going to expand Barstown, there's a lot of things that go into that discussion. Utility cost, the cost of the expansion, do they have to spend money on warehousing when they could use that money on expansion and lease warehousing? A lot of that comes into play, and then the growth of our distillery business has created a huge demand for warehouse space for case goods that are, you know, glass, and also barrels and other products that they use in there, so same thing for them, they want their warehousing space for finished product, not for product that's getting ready to be finished, so all this comes into play, it's a kind of a different situation than we've had 10 years ago, and the demand is there, this property sat there for, ever since Wilson Industrial Park was created, hardly had a nibble until Kim soaked the timber off of it and got it cleaned up, and then we started getting interested in it. She said that you couldn't see the forest for the trees, you couldn't see the value of this property for the trees, and now it's, the site is a little more pleasant to the eye and has a little more curb appeal, we have gotten some interest, so some of that discussion is part of the reason for warehousing to be put in Wilson Industrial Park, and also some of these warehouses in other parts of the community, while the owner doesn't have businesses, and they sublease to companies who have jobs and so forth, we talked about an example that with Strong Spirits, started out renting space, and today they own and operate a huge facility of their own, and I know with the Guthrie Center, we sublease space to companies that have employees, obviously they use the Guthrie Center employees, but, so there's a need there for people who don't need 25,000 or 50,000 square foot for their small startup, but those startups can turn into big businesses further down the road, so this all makes sense, I think, to the BIDC, and I think Kim has made a good case for this to the council, so I just add that, since I sit on the BIDC, I can share that information with him as to the importance of this type of development and the need for it, so with that, I wouldn't entertain the motion, we've got, excuse me, we have a motion to a second, and is there any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, all in favor, then, see if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Or opposed? Motion's carried, then, thank you.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kim.
Yes, Kim, thanks for the, good work, she's a busy gal.
It's fine.
We had a lot of things still going on, and we speak, so, I don't think we have anything else on the agenda, so if nothing else, I would ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Motion, Councilman Shackleton, we have a second.
Second.
Senator Councilman Buckman, all in favor, see if I'm saying aye?
Aye.
Or opposed? Motion's carried. Thank you.